Good evening, welcome. I am going to go ahead and get started, we're going to get started with with roll call. Before that, for our community members, I just wanted to make a brief announcement. Our colleague Director Banfield submitted her resignation on Sunday. She received a very exciting appointment from the governor last week. She will now serve on the Superior Court of Clark County. We wish her very well, we're sad to see her go. And details about her replacement, the appointment process are forthcoming. With that, we'll go ahead and get started with roll call. I will start with Director Barrows.
Here.
Director Decker.
Here.
And Director Smith.
Here.
And I am also here, we are all present and accounted for. We are going to start with public comment this evening. Citizen comments is the time in our meeting where the board and administrative staff like to hear comments from the public. Because most matters require fact finding and review, the board is not able to respond to any public comments made at this time. Additionally, the state's Open Public Meetings Act restricts deliberation on topics that have not been placed on the publicly noticed agenda in advance. If follow up action is necessary, the board will ask the superintendent to work with the administrative staff to consider the information and respond accordingly. Speakers are expected to be respectful. Personnel complaints and personal attacks are not permitted. The board asks that personnel complaints be submitted in writing. Speakers will be promoted to panelists as I call their name. Please state your name and address for the record. You will have three minutes to make your comments. If you hear a chime, please conclude your remarks. If you have materials or additional comments you would like the board to review, please submit those to vpsboard dot directors at van sd dot org. That information will be shared with the superintendent and board. The board appreciates, listens, and cares about the broad ranges of perspectives in our community. We thank you for your comments. So our first public comment tonight is from Miranda Bickford.
Chair Sproul, we do not see a Miranda Bickford in the attendee list, so you'll move to the second.
Okay, we will, just for anyone watching, if you log on to Zoom with the name that you use to sign up for public comments, it makes it go a lot smoother and faster. We will move on to Carrie Van Ostrin. There you are, welcome.
Thanks for your patience and good evening. My name is Carrie Van Ostrin, I live at 2907 East 24th Street, Vancouver, Washington 98661. Apologies because I'm becoming kind of a regular, but I'm an educator with VPS, but also represent our certified staff as the VPA president. So first, I want to say I'm grateful to the school board especially for encouraging VPS staff to consider building oversight and flexibility as we've explored this transition to elementary hybrid at this point and recognize that this evening there's opportunity to learn a little bit more about what is currently underway for secondary potential transition as well. There are understandably unique student and staff needs and the opportunity to make accommodations in alignment with what has been mutually agreed upon with district and association collaboration again is greatly appreciated. I do want to express though some ongoing concern that I shared at our last school board meeting and that was reinforced by some board director comments as well, recognizing that the transition to elementary has been in particular quite a rushed process, especially considering the quick turnaround of parent survey results, the need to follow up with a number of families to ensure that their preferences are reflected in current building plans and then the quick hustle to shuffle students and staff according to those building based plans. Director Smith alluded to the fact that we may not have a long enough runway and I would like to reiterate the fact that we have not had a long enough runway in spite of having now two days worth of K1 and 2 experiencing hybrid at our elementary buildings. A lot of the feedback we've received from members and community members or parents alike has indicated that the 11th hour of clarifying whose roster you're on or what role you'll be fulfilling may not have even been clarified by the end of day Friday, let alone clear as you entered into onsite service and or remote service beginning Monday this week. So recognizing the rushed experience we've already undergone with elementary, I would again advocate for a more, a slower and more methodical approach as we continue to expand. If that is still our course and as we're considering six 12 plans, I realize there are firmer case count thresholds that may be a part of the formal timeline established here. But again, would just reiterate, a slower and more methodical approach I think would provide grace and space for educators, families, students, and district level staff alike to be as intentional as possible in meeting student and staff needs in the process. Again, appreciate the the chance for families and educators alike to have options to explore, but also recognize that time is needed in order for those to be truly considered. So thank you for the opportunity to share and I look forward to gleaning further detail in hopes of a slower and more methodical transition if we really aren't waiting to have educators vaccinated first.
Thank you, Carrie. And I just wanted to check in on Ms. Miranda Bickford, have, do we find her? Does not look like.
She she has signed on, Madam Chair.
So Ms. Bickford, when you are promoted, is she?
Okay, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Please, when, start with your name and address and then you'll have three minutes.
Okay, wonderful. My name is Miranda Bickford and my address is 1212 East 29th Street, Vancouver, Washington 98663. So I've come here today as a concerned parent. My daughter is a student at Washington Elementary School and also just a generally concerned community member. I have not formally been to any of the school board meetings, this is the first one. So if you guys have already cited this information, I apologize for making you repeat it, but I emailed you guys over the last couple of days trying to gather any information that you guys had specifically for why you voted to reopen Vancouver School District. I keep kind of getting the same information, like you guys are going based off of the Health Department or based on the government, the governor's suggestions, but I want to know specifically, how did you guys individually base your decisions, like, you know, regardless of what the governor or the the superintendent directed you guys to do individually, what research did you guys do when you based your decision? That's my first question.
So this is not a back and forth, this is a public comment portion. You have three minutes to deliver a comment to the board.
Okay, I was not aware of that. I emailed my questions a few days ago and was approved to ask the questions. So is there like a different section of the meeting in which I will be able to ask these questions?
Unfortunately not, I can send you the public comments or preface that kind of explains what the public comment section, our protocols are.
Okay, that's a little bit confusing considering somebody specifically emailed me back and gave me the go ahead to ask these questions. Okay, well then I will retract the question and just say that I'm concerned with the new strain of COVID circling around and most likely becoming the most prevalent strain in the next 60 days based on the data in the UK and Brazil. I'm really concerned that putting all of these children in this classroom, regardless of whether or not it's six feet apart with one layer disposable masks or cloth mask is going to have a huge negative impact on our community. My daughter, like I said, goes to Washington Elementary. It's a walking school, that means everybody who goes to that school lives within walking distance, it's just a few blocks. My community is mostly multi-generational. It's very highly Latinx community and they are higher, they are disproportionately more at risk of dying from COVID. I feel like with this new strain circulating, the inability for people to get masks that are going to be most effective because of this new strain. Sorry, I'm I'm concerned about your guys' decision.
Thank you for your comment. That concludes our public comment portion of our meeting. This is a special board meeting where we have a topic from Dr. Webb's team, he will be reviewing our reopening plan for middle school and high school. I will turn it over, Dr. Webb, to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today, federal health officials from the CDC weighed in with a call for returning children to the nation's classroom as soon as possible, saying the preponderance of available evidence indicates that in-person instruction can be carried out safely as long as mask wearing and social distancing and the other CDC mitigation strategies are maintained and implemented. Researchers at the Center for Disease Control and Prevention recently published new findings in the Journal of American Medicine. Federal officials cited the many benefits of in-person schooling for children and argued for prioritizing their educational development and emotional and mental health needs. As you know, schools are an important source, not just of education, but health and social services for children. Even though the pandemic is changing and new variants are emerging, CDC officials report there is little evidence that schools spark the kind of outbreak seen in nursing homes, meatpacking and food processing plants or contribute to increased transmission in communities. This new study is consistent with the Washington Department of Health updated guidance released on December 16th, 2020. As of today, Clark County Public Health COVID-19 activity is still in the high level at 401 cases per 100,000. This is down from 473 a week ago on January 18th. According to Clark County Public Health officials, models indicate that the post-holiday spike will continue trending downward in the weeks ahead and that as the feds and states are able to stand up more vaccine doses and points of dispensing, that this trend should continue. Already, we see several mass vaccination sites on both sides of the river, along with healthcare providers scaling vaccinations. We are also working closely with a FEMA Incident Management Team to identify additional Clark County points of dispensing sites at several area schools that could expedite vaccinations to all those who are identified as 1B, 1 through 4 categories, including all K-12 employees according to the recently released Washington State Vaccination Schedule. As these plans are finalized, we will share this more broadly with our public. At this time, the current Washington Department of Health guidance in the high activity allows for the following. K5 in-person learning with groups of 15 or fewer students. Currently, we have K students receiving hybrid in-person learning. Currently, we're serving approximately 2,600 K through 2 students. Kinder students have had access to in-person learning since November 16th. We will expand to grades 3 through 5 next Monday. Students farthest from educational justice, differently able, disengaged, and at-risk students can receive in-person learning with groups of 15 or fewer students. Currently, we are serving approximately 1,350 students in grades 3 through 12. Many of these students have been in our schools since September. I wanted to clarify one additional factor relative to this December 16th Washington Department of Health guidance. If schools can demonstrate the ability to limit transmission in the school environment, then we are allowed to add additional grades. As the board is aware and as we've reported previously, we have not had one single COVID positive student transmission case in our schools. We have had four positive staff transmission cases at district sites. All of those four have been identified as adult to adult transmissions. In order to transition grades 6 through 8 to hybrid in-person learning, we must be below 350 cases per 100,000 over 14-day span. And we must be below 200 cases per 100,000 over a 14-day span to transition our high school students to hybrid in-person learning. Once those metrics are met, we would likely transition with grades 6 or 9 and then the balance of the grades the following week at each level. Now, we're hopeful that we'll be in a position in February to transition grades 6 through 8 and March to transition grades 9 through 12. Of course, that is contingent upon those metrics being met countywide. Our team is here to speak about our 612 reopening plan, contingent again upon county metric levels consistent with the Washington Department of Health December guidance. I'll ask that the board hold questions to the end of the staff presentation. I'm going to turn this over to our Executive Director for Secondary Programs, Jim Gray, Jim?
Good evening, Dr. Webb. Members of the board, cabinet, and community, yes. I'd like to start by recognizing the diligence, determination, and care that elementary school principals and teachers have put into the hybrid plans previously presented to the board. Tonight, we will roll out the current thinking relative to middle and high school plans for hybrid learning. For this evening, Nicole Altosso and Lindsay Rogers will be giving us an update on safety and health protocols. Christina Irmonger will be giving us some insight on the technology side, technology training side. We have four principals to highlight specific areas of their own building plans to show the level of planning across the 612 system. And finally, Dave Bennett will give us a quick update on athletics. Our goal tonight is to provide as much specificity as possible so that the board is informed. And most importantly, our families will be, will be better able to make decisions for their families. We also intend to seek additional input from our labor partners in a timely manner so that all stakeholders understand the go-forward plan. Of course, it is fundamental to note that middle and high schools beginning hybrid learning is dependent upon COVID-19 data benchmarks determined by the state and county health departments. As Dr. Webb previously stated, we hope this is sometime in February for middle schools and March for high schools. Slide, next slide, please. Oh. I'm way out in front of you clearly. All right, slide two, yes, perfect. As we look at the intended delivery model at the secondary level, it is essential we understand the complexities of secondary scheduling. Secondary master, secondary master board considerations include several things. One, scheduling is content area-based necessitating the need for teachers to have specific grade level and content area endorsements. Two, scheduling also relies on student-specific class selections that meet their individual needs, career pathways, or passion area exploration. Three, daily life in the secondary level is grounded in specific class period segments such as a six-period schedule in which students move from one content area to another. For these reasons, the flexibility to have some teachers serve either in-person or remote learners like our elementary school model is just not scalable due to the impacts it would have on rebuilding master schedules in the middle of a grading period. As an example, Advanced Placement Physics not only demands a specific content area endorsement, but also specific AP level training in order to teach the subject matter. Thus, very few people are even qualified to teach this course. Keep this in mind as we explore the delivery model. Exactly like our elementary school students, secondary students would be served in a two-cohort and two-day-a-week in-person model. Cohort A would meet on Mondays and Tuesdays in person and work asynchronously Wednesday through Friday. Cohort B would work asynchronously Monday through Wednesday and and attend in-person classes Thursday and Friday. Both cohorts would be asynchronous on Wednesday, obviously. We still need to gather input from our labor partners, but at this point, we point, we hope families will have three choices to make. They can attend in-person hybrid, remain full-time remote, or move full-time to VBLA, which is our fully online program at least your school. The abilities for family, the ability for families to stay in remote learning is important because families still have practical reasons for needing to not attend in-person services without having to commit to fully online programs for the rest of the school year. For example, families in IB at Columbia River or AP level courses throughout the comprehensive high schools who also have family members more susceptible to COVID-19 would be forced to remove their child from their course shortly before the AP or IB exams. VPS does have live streaming capabilities so that students can remotely attend classes in real time. We believe this is an equity builder for students and a workload solution for staff. This may be a delivery option for our staff. Slide three, please. Schedules include a one-hour early release each day with Wednesdays remaining a remote-only day for all students. This model supports teacher collaboration time and planning while being able to provide targeted supports for individual students on a daily basis. As referenced earlier, the curricular area-focused schedules of secondary schools restricts flexibility with regard to daily schedules. As you can see, lunches are set to allow custodial teams to clean effectively between the lunches. Next slide, please. Here you see comprehensive high schools would be on a six-period schedule. This means student in-person contact would be two times a week versus only one if we continued a block schedule. Additionally, please see the early release and Wednesday remote times, remote-only times. Again, these are specifically designed for both student and teacher needs. Next slide, please. Here you see the schedule for Thomas Jefferson, Jason Lee, and Discovery Middle Schools. They are already on an eight-period block schedule. In this schedule, we are able to maximize student learning time while ensuring lunches are in the middle portion of the day. Unlike the comprehensive high schools, we felt an eight-period day resulted in an unmanageable daily schedule with excessive transitions throughout the day if it was all in one day. Next slide, please. Next up, we have Nicole and Lindsay.
Good evening. So we are going to just kind of brush over really quick since we've gone over these many a time. I will start with mitigation and prevention plan. So the district mitigation and prevention plan is still a continuously updated document that is live in the Google Drive as well as accessible from the district website for staff and families to review. There is still a revision history box within the plan that details out what additions have been made and when. In addition to that, we still continuously email any updates or reminders to building administrators and district leadership. And also, we provide verbal updates during what is now currently weekly principal meetings. Thank you, and so the response plan, same thing, it is a live document that we continually update as we get updates from the Washington State Department of Health or Clark County Public Health. We keep everyone current on these updates through principals' meetings, emails, notifications. The biggest update that's been on it lately is just more frequently asked questions get added there all the time. So if you're ever looking for updates, that's really the best place to go. There has been a recent addition of flow charts, which I believe we talked about two weeks ago, of an update to the flow charts that were created by EST 112 in conjunction with the Health Department. And so those updates are currently reflected on the response plan. So Health Room Annex, actually, you know what, Nicole, we'll go ahead and do the health survey first.
Yeah, no worries.
Another thing on both the mitigation and prevention plan and response plans, all those updates that we push out are then also still provided by the principals to the buildings. We tell them, we advise them to push the information out to the staff as well as discuss it at the monthly school safety committee meetings where COVID-19 is a standing agenda item. To briefly overview health surveys, that will still, or health screening surveys that will still continue to happen. The A group, it will move to a more logical flow of A group will receive their surveys both Monday and Tuesday mornings. B group will receive both their surveys on Thursdays and Fridays. In addition, there was a recent update to the K-12 2020, 2021 guidance from the Washington State Department of Health where a, an additional screening question was added. And I want to note that VPS's health screen already added that particular question a few months ago prior to this guidance based off of scenarios we were seeing in the schools. So as far as the Health Room Annex, reminder that this is the isolation room. This is where if a student begins to exhibit symptoms of COVID-19, they are brought to the Health Room Annex until they can be brought straight home. So as far as getting schools ready for putting together the Health Room Annexes, we had created an operational protocol document that was distributed to all principals and they have all gone through it and checked each box, which includes selecting the room. And there's a really big piece in there on training and how are you going to communicate changes? How are you going to train people on where the Health Room Annex is? Really, the big thing we wanted to focus on was when there's a major change to something, how are you going to let your building staff know? And so that is documented in each building's operational protocol for their Health Room Annex. And then just a quick thing on transitions. Products available for transitions, so when, during passing period when students are going to different classrooms, products available include vital oxide, sanitizing wipes, and soap and water. I think that's about it for us, Nicole.
Yep, thank you, Jim, and everyone else.
Thank you, next slide, please. Christina Irmonger.
All right, I'm happy to report tonight that there really is no new technology that we're adding to this plan. The technology that we rolled out at the beginning of the year and really at the beginning of COVID still stands and teachers have a lot of experience with that. But just to remind you that we did do some five hours of mandatory training in August around the topics that were listed. And we are planning to do some additional training specific to live streaming instructional practices for teachers that are returning. So we know that's really important to get them set up and feel confident in being able to do that. I also wanted to point out that we will have some touchpoints available within the buildings. We have our digital learning coaches, our teacher librarians, and our building technology support specialists ready to assist small group or individual as support is requested. So we'll have those supports in place as well, like we always have, but I've never really brought that point forward. So on technology, nothing new, just looking at some streaming instructional practices and strategies to support the transition back to hybrid.
Thank you, Christina. Next slide, please. And Luke Lecout from Thomas Jefferson Middle School.
Yeah, good evening. Although I represent Thomas Jefferson, the work here that we're going to cover over the next few slides with principals has been in collaboration with all middle school and high school principals. So to kind of give everybody a general idea of what some key areas of our building and our processes will look like. So first, we're going to talk about building entry similar to elementary schools. Students will arrive on campus via bus transportation, parent drop-off, or those that have the opportunity to walk to campus. All students will enter through the main entrance at the middle school level. We have one, one main entrance that we will allow students to enter for this experience. Student social distancing will be taught and reinforced while students wait outside prior to entering the building. And then a thermal scanner similar at the elementary level will take the temperature of each student as they enter the building. An example of this process is highlighted in the the slide presentation that you might be able to see there. Please note that the temperature reading is immediately shared via the screen with the supervising staff member. Any student who has a temperature above 99.7 will have their temperature retaken. If that temperature remains above 100 point four, student will be escorted to the aforementioned health room annex. And then after students are screened, they will report to their first period class in all six middle school buildings. During passing time, that's also an area where close contact has potential to be happening in any given school if it allows for one-way traffic that will be emphasized and, and required. Directional arrows and signage will help students efficiently navigate the hallways. In most cases, stairs will be designated either up or down only. There's a, a few of our middle schools that have stairways, others are one-level buildings. So designating up or down only stairs will be a priority in those buildings. And then in reference to the map on the screen, schools have invested in the appropriate resources to ensure students are moving around the building in a safe manner. Again, these guidelines and parameters have been collaborated on by all six middle school principals over the last several weeks to ensure that we're following some of, some of protocols in each building. I will turn it over to April.
April.
Next slide. Thank you. So highlighting Discovery's building plan, like all the secondary schools, we're working with the district safety team and then our building safety team to create a detailed plan for when we return to hybrid. We recognize that CDC and Clark County Public Health guidelines can change, so we're making sure that our plans are flexible and we can adjust as needed. So the two portions I'm going to highlight from Discovery's plan include lunches and eating. The current plan at the secondary level and at Discovery for lunch is to use plexi glass dividers in the cafeteria to allow two students per table with tables six feet apart. I will acknowledge the slide you're looking at says four students per table, but like I mentioned with today's guidance from the Clark County Public Health, the head of Clark County Public Health, they're suggesting two students per table will allow for us to continue to socially distance. So that is an example of an adjustment I was mentioning. After students complete eating, they will move outside and then obviously continue to maintain social distancing and mask-wearing outside. We do have in the middle school schedule between the lunch periods to allow for custodial staff to complete cleaning and sanitizing before the next lunch period. When students are seated at their tables for lunches, they will end up having an assigned table. And then we will group tables together based on that current class period. And that will allow us to do any needed contact tracing from the lunch periods. All right, the next section regarding cleaning. For cleaning, the classrooms are all provided with materials as was mentioned before, the hand sanitizer, wipes, cleaning supplies. Student desks will end up being sanitized between class periods. The class periods for the middle school are limited to four per day to go ahead and decrease those transitions. On the Wednesday non-student attendance day, that's when custodial staff are able to complete a deeper clean. But on that daily evening clean, staff, custodial staff are using the electrostatic sprayer in addition to having a focus on all of the high-touch surfaces. On Fort.
Thank you very much, April. Kurt Scheidel from Fort Vancouver Center for International Studies. There he is. Oh, you're muted.
Okay, I think I'm good. You can hear me now? Yeah, so I just wanted to start by just thanking everybody with the district for 20, 28 years. I started as a student in the in the fourth grade in Vanguard Public Schools, and I think you see how impressive the people are in their preparation. We've had months of preparation for this. We've been in this pandemic for 10 and a half months. And along the way, we've learned so many things. And so I just, I just wanted, I guess, the board to know my feelings about how how prepared people are. And today for our work at Fort, and this is representative of the work at all the high schools and middle schools and throughout the system, on what we're trying to, the level of preparation and communication and support that has been there in making this happen. So Jefferson, could you click on that training for staff link really quickly? This is an example of the types of things that we are working to help prepare our staff for knowing and then for helping our students know. These are over the course of these 10 and a half months, many things have changed, many new alterations have came in over time. And this is our, the latest information, the latest evidences as a way to help our staffs know the types of things that they can access if they have questions, but also the types of things that we're going to help to, to teach them. So I just wanted to kind of share that piece with you a little bit. It even includes if you go down towards the bottom, the link for when the opportunity is going to arise for all teachers, staff members in the K-12 system to be able to get vaccinated. We've also included the link where they can set up their appointments when that eventually comes. So you don't need to click on it, but we can go back to the main slides. At Fort Vancouver, as in, go ahead and click, yeah, at Fort Vancouver, as in other schools, since we're a larger school, we'll have two entrances with thermal cameras with the same technology that Luke talked about staffed by members with the same protocols. We've learned a lot with the small group pod work. I think Dr. Webb said there are 13, over 1,300 students who are already engaged in learning at the school with teachers and with support personnel. We've learned a lot about that process that's going to help inform as we scale up to new students coming in. The health room annex has been mentioned already and the, the things that will happen there. At our school and at all the schools, as we, as we move towards increased opportunity for students to receive support while at school, we will be training staff and students, both leading up to and after starting. So we will, all of the schools be engaged in instructing their students in terms of what the protocols are, how to move about the building, the new cultural norms we're going to have to have as we, as we adapt to the realities of attending school while still navigating the, the end of the pandemic. And at our school, we will try and be visible, consistent, and wise with protocol implementation. I think that we have to remember that there are varying levels of comfortableness as we make these changes and for both students and staff, and we're going to be help everybody move towards making this happen. So we're excited about the opportunity and thank you for the chance to share some of the things we're doing to prepare our schools for this new, new opportunity.
Thanks, Kurt. Next slide, please. Alex Otpal from Columbia River High School. Alex, we're having a little bit of trouble hearing you, sir.
Alex, you may want to sign out and sign back in very quickly. You've got some broadband connectivity challenges. It's bandwidth there.
There he is.
Hey, my picture's still up. Okay, sorry about that. One more reason to get us all back on site together, right? All right. I'm going to go ahead and go, Jim verbally. Yes, am I good?
You're good, sir.
All right. In this picture, you heard a lot about the health room annex and here you get to see what it looks like at room 307 here at Columbia River High School. Maybe the silver lining of being a construction remodel site is that we get to repurpose a lot of different areas of our building. This room is connected to our video productions or CRTV station. And this gives us an opportunity to think differently about how we use space. Well, this is me in the picture in the PPE that's been provided. This is shortly after a training I did with Lori Kober, our school nurse. What I want to recognize is the people behind the camera. Rob Duncan, Associate Principal, Nick Davies, Associate Principal, Athletic Director, and Ken Roberts, Associate Principal have all worked to get the word out on what we're trying to do. And Kurt just mentioned the various trainings that have taken place at Fort, opportunities that we're taking on a weekly basis. The work with our staff on, this is our plan. This is what we think is best as we go forward. And we've invited our safety committee and our staff to take a look at our plans as transparently as possible. Invited folks to come in and punch holes in the plan as a process so that they can identify questions that may come up, doubts or concerns that they might have that we can address early on. So I want to say thanks. Kurt mentioned the system. I want to thank those individuals on a daily basis that as we go through this process. Again, with thinking about how we're going to move around the building, one of the highlights for us really for tonight is making sure that we're being flexible with our spaces. And so at River, we have lower commons and an upper commons, and we've also begun planning to use our small gym. We know it can fit 70 more single tables and chairs in the, in the gymnasium. And as we grow in this process and as we're able to bring more students on campus, we're going to use those spaces differently and be able to expand. The big key term last year we used was pivot and now it's adapt. So we're adapting as best we can. So working quickly through our bullet points here on the slide, we really started publicizing what we'd like to do on January 20th, and again, inviting staff into look at what we're thinking about, sharing that as often as we can. We've invited so far about 40 students on campus per day, but less or fewer than 40 are coming on campus. But we're getting an opportunity to kind of test out the waters with what we're, we'd like to do with larger groups. We want to minimize procedural changes as we think about those possibilities of bringing more folks on campus. We know we need to teach and reteach. And this includes, you know, where we have students in holding areas between the start of school and at lunch. You've seen many times the thermal camera. Again, going back to our construction that's going on here, River, we're down to one entrance, which simplifies things for, for us in terms of safety because everybody's going through the same door, the same procedure every day. And again, with the flexibility that we have to have, and Jim mentioned this before with the scheduling, working with our partners at Cascadia Tech through the other magnets in a running start, our plan is to allow for some flexibility. With open campuses with 16, 17, 18-year-old students on campus, we're going to allow some freedom and with freedom comes responsibility. And I will say that everything I've seen so far with students who have been able to come on campus, they've been hyper-sensitive to what we expect and super-responsive to directions and expectations. And as I sit here in my office, I can look out on our stadium and I can see the lights in the turf. And I can see pods of our soccer team practicing in their groups with Coach Philly. They're doing exactly what they need to do. And with that is a transition to Dave Bennett and more about athletics. Thanks for your time.
Dave Bennett.
Good evening. I'm, everyone hearing me okay? My sound is working. All right. So I'm happy to report tonight that high school athletics will officially be returning beginning Monday, February 1st, following the WI Healthy Washington Sport and Activity Guidelines. The guidelines were issued by the Washington State Department of Health and the Governor's Office. And those were updated as recently as January 11th. So area ADs have been working tirelessly for months to prepare and change plans and update plans to advocating for our student athletes to be ready to safely return to athletic activities when, when the time was right, when we can do it and we've met the requirements of the metrics. So excuse me. So sports are going to begin Monday with traditional fall sports. Cross-country, boys and girls, boys tennis and boys golf will, will all return to practice and competition as they are all sports that are considered low-risk and conducted outdoors. Football, volleyball, girls soccer, and slow pitch softball will be returning to practice under the guidelines of the of the Healthy Washington Return to Play. And they, those, those sports cannot return to competition until our region is in phase two of the Healthy Washington reopening plan. Girls swim and dive has been temporarily postponed. It's a phase-two sport as well. And we're waiting on phase, not only phase two, but the availability of facilities to be able to hold those competitions once we, once we start that sport. So that's kind of a TBD for now for girls swim and dive. Both the 2A GSHL of which Columbia River, Fort Vancouver, and Hudson Bay are members, and the 3A, 4A GSHL of which Skyview is a member are currently following the WI's plan for sports seasons with fall sports again beginning Monday and anticipated to run through March 20th. That season will be followed by traditional spring sports and then traditional winter sports to end the school year. Those seasons are have been and will continue to be somewhat fluid as we continue to monitor the availability to participate in those sports with, with the metrics and the different phases. We'll continue to use the safety protocols that are currently in place that we've been using for our summer 2.0 workouts that Alex referenced that we began back in October and our coaches are are well-versed in those protocols now, and those do include screening students, including a temperature check as well. So we'll continue to use those when we start on February 1st. And we are also hopeful that continuing to move forward with the metrics and having success with the high school sports that we will be able to run a spring sports season at the middle school level as well, which would be track and field. And that is the sport season, of course, that those students missed out on last spring as well. And that would provide an opportunity for both boys and girls in all grades of middle school to participate.
Thanks, Dave. Next slide. And now we'd like to open it up for questions. Jefferson, you can stop sharing. Thanks, team.
Thank you. Thank you for the very thorough presentation. I will open it up to the other directors. I'm sure we have a few questions or two. Anyone want to jump in?
Okay.
You can start if you want.
No, 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 Wendy, you are much more aware of the intricate details of this scenario.
Well, I don't know that that's true, but I do have questions. Mostly about kind of the, the, I guess, the, my notes say the delivery model slide or the, the kind of the the school day, and then there were some sched, like some schedules that were also shared. First of all, thank you to everyone because, I mean, I'm a high school teacher, so I know how complex this all gets. First of all, thank you to everyone because, I mean, I'm a high school teacher, so I know how complex this all gets. It's crazy. So I appreciate everybody and all your efforts to kind of figure out how this is going to work because it just gets, it gets so complicated so fast with the secondary level in a way that elementary just doesn't. So thank you, everybody, for all of the time and effort you put into putting these together. And it appears to be a fairly thorough job, so I really appreciate that. And so I'm curious about, in full disclosure, I'm, you know, the mother of a middle schooler and you've got other second, parents of secondary students on your board here too. And so I'm coming at this from a little bit of a personal perspective, frankly. For the AB cohorts, you said that there's kind of three choices, or rather, for the families, there's three choices that they can make. They can either choose full in-person hybrid, which we, they're on campus two days a week and at home three days a week. Full remote, which I'm assuming means they would still be with their same teachers at their same school and their same schedule, just doing everything remotely five days a week, right? And then the option of doing it online through the lease or campus. For, if I understood it correctly, when they're, when they're not in school, they're working asynchronously the other three days, right? Okay. So for those who are full remote, they're gonna do asynchronous learning five days a week. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so there's no like expectation that they're logging in and live streaming a class two days a week?
Yeah, so ultimately, and again, this is where partnership with our labor, our labor friends is so essential. We need to have a conversation about whether or not, if you're in the A A remote section, right? You would ultimately be synchronous the entire time, but really content area delivery may be just in the front side of the week if you're the remote cohort A group. Does that make sense? You may be the remote cohort B group and be getting basically asynchronous, content asynchronously in the back half of the week.
Right.
Right?
Right. So I guess that was my question. If they're not logging in and doing the live stream thing, then they're really only getting equivalent of three days asynchronous work, right?
Yeah, yeah, there's not an expectation about the backside if you're in cohort A or vice versa.
Right, right, okay. And then for the middle school classes, so the high school, if I understood correctly, and this is just a clarifying question, the high schools, they're going, the high school students will attend all their classes both days that they're on campus. At middle school, they'll only do like evens on one day and odds on the other, right?
Yeah, and ultimately, what I showed you was three of our middle schools, as you may or may not be aware, over time, our middle schools are on probably three or four different block schedules. But ultimately, Alcan and Geyser would return to seven-period class days. And ultimately, they're staying very similar to the class schedules they have now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I understood. Thank you.
Yeah.
And then I have two more questions and I think I'm done. One, there was a clarification about the lunches that there's only gonna be two students per table in the lunchroom?
Yeah.
Versus four? Is that at middle school and high school, it's the same plan for both?
Yeah, and that's an interesting, originally, we thought the Plexiglas would allow us to have four students per table. We sought some guidance from Dr. Melnick. And to social distancing or the six feet does not go away, even though you have the Plexiglas. So two students per table is going to allow us to stay with that. Now, in full transparency, we will need to go back to work to make sure that we have capacity at lunches to house all kids at those lunches. There may be a scenario where we need to revisit those schedules to look at three lunches.
Okay, that, thank you for that. That was my follow-up question.
Absolutely. Great question.
That's a significant reduction than what's normal, I'm assuming. I know in my building, I mean, we've even talked about using gym space and things like that because they've just got enough room. So I was curious. And then my last question was something that, I mean, was kind of briefly touched on, and I'm just curious if you can speak a little bit more fully about our magnet programs and impacts to magnet programs in terms of like students traveling from one building to another building and these different schedules, and if that's all still going to work kind of as normal or if there are other impacts to magnet programs?
Well, magnet programs are such a central part of Vancouver Public Schools. We will still bus kids using all proper protocols. It is one of the reasons why we, at the comprehensive high schools, maintain the six-period bell schedule because in our current block schedules, there's lots of conflicts additionally with Cascadia Tech. So we thought that the six-period day would allow us to coordinate with the magnet programs. OSPI does ask us to consider minimizing those programs. But again, they're such a central piece of our district and quite honestly, it's families' wishes. We can't stop it.
Okay, Jim, I appreciate that. That's all the questions I have for now. Thank you.
Okay, I have a few. Hopefully not too many. So the very first thing that comes to mind is that a number of our secondary school classrooms are actually multi-grades. And so if we're only letting like sixth graders in, but there's a math class that has sixth and seventh graders, or we're only letting, you know, ninth graders in, but there's a math class that has ninth and 10th graders, how are we working that? Or how are you guys working that?
So ultimately, the theory is that we would have, the first week, sixth graders would come in at the middle school and then the next week, seventh and eighth. And then, once we get into high school, ninth graders would come in and then 10, 11, 12. So ultimately, the buildings, just like at the elementary school, would be broken into cohort A, cohort B. It becomes infinitely more complicated as we move up into high schools to ensure the school is balanced ultimately in half between the cohorts as well as in individual classrooms. But that also means when you have those blended classrooms, like you were talking about, Kathy, that you have to get right down into the classroom and go, here's this student's schedule, they should be in this class, or no, that class has, you know, is not balanced, and so we're gonna have to go back to work on that individual class.
I think, no, actually, what I'm saying is if you bring in sixth grade.
Yeah.
But that, those sixth graders, I'm just using math because math is the thing that's coming to mind. But some of those math, those sixth graders are actually in seventh or even eighth grade math.
Yeah, yeah.
What hap, how do we do that? We've only brought in part of that math class.
Yep.
What, what are we doing? And it gets more complicated even at the high school because you have kids taking different levels of language classes and math classes and other things, science. So I'm just curious as to how that gets handled.
Yeah, so a couple of things. So predominantly, as we had discussions at Middleland High School, most of the blended classrooms, most of the blended classrooms are predominantly in the seventh and eighth grade classes. You ask a great question because that goes to why we're bringing in the sixth graders early. As you can probably guess, sixth graders have never been on campus, ninth graders have never been on campus. Every building is expected to onboard staff and students. If someone, and hopefully this isn't crass to say, if someone thinks they're gonna be delivering content at the sixth grade class level in the first two couple of days of class without setting up routines, without attending to student support needs, we need to have a conversation, to be honest. So we're gonna onboard, we're gonna love on our kids, we're gonna onboard them into the building, and we're gonna give grace to actually get deep into the content at a later date when we're all in the building at the same time. So that's the plan at least.
Okay, and not to belabor the point. So while the sixth, let's say there's five sixth graders that are taking eighth grade math, they're in geometry. While those five sixth graders are onboarding, what's happening to the rest of the geometry class?
What's happening to the rest of the geometry class?
Yeah, that's the eighth graders. That are in the geometry class. Are in the building. Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna have to pause. We're gonna have to give some grace.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the expectations are the same for everybody because, you know, having been through this secondary system a couple of times, I was like, whoa, wait a minute, what if my kids were going in, you know, as sixth graders doing algebra or whatever, how would that work for the rest of the kids?
Absolutely, great question.
Grace, I'm all about grace, so that's terrific.
Yep.
All right, thank you. And I think that's my only question at this point, believe it or not.
Tracy, do you have anything?
Yeah, one of my questions was when you were talking about the kind of entry points, I guess, which I think it's great to make sure they're kind of screening with the, with the temperature checks. Are there also like home attestations like that parents do? Or is this kind of the primary, just the temperature checks are kind of the primary ways to check for symptoms in our students?
Yeah, Nicole Lindsay, can you address that?
Yeah. Yeah, so it is a combination screening method that the district is implementing. So the health screens are sent, the daily health screens are sent to the parents by 7:00 AM for the group. So A group, they will receive it Monday morning and Tuesday morning. B group will receive it Thursday morning and Friday morning. And then the combination method, per the Washington State Department of Health, is then we do additional screenings when they enter upon the building, which is the temperature checks. Just a general kind of visual observation, that type of thing.
Okay, I didn't hear anything about the attestations, so I wasn't sure if the, you know, the thermal cameras was the primary, that was kind of the only way or there are home attestations too. And I guess, you know, kind of just a thought I had, I guess it's not a question, is just with the entry point, just through one door, and it sounds like the kids will be kind of lined up socially distanced. I just wonder about the time it's going to take to kind of funnel everybody through. You know, I mean, obviously, when it first starts, but once you have all of the grades in the, in the building, I'm just wondering how long that's gonna take. I'd be curious to see, so.
Yeah, great question, Tracy. And again, a great question. There are some things we'll clearly have to work through. We do know that there's, for instance, at the middle school level, there's a flow of buses. So, you know, if you had 400 kids in a cohort, they don't all just show up at the same time. It may feel like that sometimes, but, you know, hopefully, there's a kind of a, to a certain point, a trickle of kids. They're not all showing up at the same time. That's generally how it goes. At the high school level, we do have kids that drive, you know, their junior and senior year. And most of them wait to the very last second, so there might be a mad dash, you know, at the bell. But, you know, we'll work through those tension points, obviously.
And we'll continue, Tracy, if I could just add, we'll continue to monitor and adjust. If we have to, we can create other queuing systems and have handheld thermometers that could expedite the entry if necessary.
And then the last question I had is just on classroom size. And I actually was, I was going back to the governor's orders because I know through K5, it's small groups of 15 or fewer, but I don't necessarily see the definition of this, of the size. So I'm just wondering, first of all, am I just not seeing that anywhere? If the classroom size is still 15 or smaller and then just making sure that our classrooms have enough space to accommodate, you know, half, because I know, I mean, in the high, at the high school and middle school level, I know class sizes are a lot bigger than at the elementary level. So just making sure there's physically enough space to have the desks all, I mean, has somebody kind of gone in and mapped out classrooms or, okay?
Every single building, every single classroom has been mapped out to ensure how many students would be able, and a teacher, obviously, would be able to be in that classroom with social distancing in place.
It is 15 or fewer students. That guidance is the same regardless of grade. And no, just like in our K5 remote versus in-person intent survey, we will likely have some families who also choose either full remote or VVLA, which would then, of course, ameliorate, you know, the counts per classroom by cohort. So there's a smoothing effect that choice provides relative to the number of students that will actually be in those classrooms.
Okay, it looks like that's it for Tracy. Kathy, did you have one more thing?
I just have one more question, and this is a very specific question because I drive by River every day and I see still a lot of construction. And Alex, you could probably answer this. How ready is, is the building itself for all these kids coming in?
So as far as classroom spaces, we're getting there. With, you know, photography and ceramics, we're nearly there. We're working out of the pottery area. We've opened up a couple of rooms in the 400. And I don't want to get too far in the weeds with the details, but we'll be ready. We'll be ready.
Boy, it's cutting it close. Thanks.
Well, as far as parking and that, that won't happen on the west end. So that, again, as I said, I think that's a little bit of a silver lining is our traffic flow can come through one area. And maybe that's silver lining.
Okay, thank you. I have a few questions. I will try to keep it brief. Jim, I was hoping you could go back through remote. I understand that there's some that you're still working out with our labor partners, and so this is a work in progress. But you, in the initial presentation, there was live streaming and there's, I know Christine mentioned there would be some professional development around live streaming. And then in Wendy's question, your answer to Wendy's question, I got a little confused about what the kind of typical remote experience would be for someone.
Yeah, so I think we should look at it from a minimum at this point because we haven't had those discussions with our labor partners. So if I was in the cohort A remote only, I would be served ultimately, if there is any synchronous time period, it would be in the one-hour early release at the end of the day or on that Wednesday. But ultimately, the predominant amount of work would be asynchronous at this point. The reason live streaming becomes important is because if that becomes part of the equation, which we hope it does, it becomes, a student is now able to live stream into the classroom as it's happening. And that's why, and teachers don't have to prepare a lesson for remote and for face-to-face. You create, at that point, one lesson.
So then, when you're saying remote A, you mean kids assigned to the A pod who are staying remote? And then they would get the support at the end of the day on Monday, Tuesday versus remote B on Thursday, Friday? Okay, that's our things. So then the B students, though, could also have the flexibility to live stream if that was something the teacher was offering?
Again, that flexibility would be there, but we have, we have to consider teachers, if you do live stream, would we want to make them responsible for the A and the B cohort at the same time? And obviously, that's a whole nother conversation. Like referenced, a minimum expectation would be students can stay remote, but at this point, you would be served asynchronously predominantly throughout the week.
Okay, so I thank you for that clarification. That definitely helps me. So I think after watching this process with middle or with elementary school, which I just want to give kudos to our principals for doing a very heavy lift in about 10 days' time. I'm a really excited third grader who is counting down the days until Monday. Um, I have a really excited uh third grader who is counting down the days until Monday. And just knowing that there's been a lot of shuffling between parents, um you know, the pod assignments and and shuffling kids. Now, I recognize that we're not um creating remote-only classes, but understanding who's staying remote and who's not, you obviously are gonna be doing some classroom balancing. Um, but I think that there's a critical path for parents of needing to know what remote looks like before they're able to knowledgeably complete that survey. So I just, I know you're still working on those conversations with label, labor partners, but for me as a parent, I can't make that decision about my sixth grader until I know what remote looks like. Is it five days of async or is it some live streaming? I mean, that would be a critical component of my decision-making process. Sorry to take it personal, but I think parents are gonna want that information. Um, I appreciate the minimum, but um just in terms of we need to get the data, so I assume we want to get the survey out, but it's hard to answer that if you don't have the clear picture of what the options are.
Absolutely.
Okay, okay. Um, so that leads me to my second question, which is about the survey going out to parents. Um, I know we had the middle school, or excuse me, the elementary schools, the response rates. Um, there were some schools that were, you know, almost a third that they were tracking down. Do we have a a strategy to uh maybe burden or um create less of a burden of follow-up for the school staff? I I know some of the schools were really overwhelmed, they had three days to track down two hundred some families. And I I just, I just wanted to maybe kind of ask what maybe we've learned from that in order to get a better execution. I know we're dependent on the families, but that was quite a bit of workload for our for our elementary admin teams.
Yeah, uh, it's a great question, and as part of this learning process, it's also one of the reasons uh why we wanted to have this conversation tonight out in front of, you know, uh a pretty long one went runway for high school, a little shorter, obviously, for the middle school, so you know, people can have some information so they can be better informed, so we can get out in front, to your point, uh even further. When you say to minimize that workload, did you, did you have any thoughts, Kyle, as far as how?
I mean, one suggestion I will offer is just making the survey maybe not just in the email inbox. I mean, I think that we do have families that don't necessarily regularly check their email. I know this only because of the communities I've been involved in on the PTO side, that sometimes through mobile device or even directing people to the website, is there a way that families could authenticate the survey from the webpage just to make it um easier access? I know my survey personally went to the, my junk mo- my junk box this last time, and I knew to look for it, so I went and got it. So, you know, that's a very logistical uh tip, but just making sure that it's accessible to everyone.
Okay, thank you.
Um, one other I have to ask, VSAA and ITAC, they're already in block schedules, they weren't necessarily touched on tonight. Um, they kind of speak to Kathy's point where there's a lot of um multi-grade uh classrooms. Um, and I'm specifically thinking if there's a few weeks between or a month between middle school and high school, how some of that will work.
Great question. We uh obviously, we're being proactive with this conversation tonight, so there's still a little work to do because those are six through twelve systems. You cannot bring in the nine through twelve kids, even though it's a full system, so we're gonna have to work through some of those uh those logistics.
Okay, no, and I I want to say just right now, I really appreciate Dr. Webb suggested that we bring this up early, and I appreciate having this conversation in front of the community and getting to be, share our input and questions early on, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, um. So, this is fairly technical, but the lab classes or hands-on classes, art disciplines. If a student opts for remote, they'll just be doing asynchronous projects, I assume, we're just gonna do our best to accommodate, okay? And then remote flexibility, it sounds like students will be assigned A and B regardless. And if you stay remote, you will just be working from home. If a family, unlike with elementary school, if a family um evolves their decision-making over the course of the spring, would there be flexibility to change selection? So for instance, opting for remote only now, um but getting comfort maybe when grandma has her vaccine. I'm just giving the, you know, hypothetical.
Yeah, um, I think, well, I don't think, I feel really confident that the system that we are prepared to deliver would provide that flexibility um going forward.
Okay, I mean, in elementary that we, I mean, the principals did such a massive, um just kind of shuffling that that wouldn't necessarily, we can't accommodate changes, but I just given that students will stay in their same courses with the same teachers, it sounds like there could be some flexibility.
Absolutely.
Okay, um. So I just, I, my last question, I mean, and I think we've talked about it here, it's just really about making sure that we do have we've liked the runway terminology, so I'll continue it, um and thank you, Wendy. I just want to make sure that there are so many moving parts, six through twelves, that we just really give ourselves the time. Um, and I know we don't have burn dates yet, and um everybody mask up and stay socially distanced, so this Um, and it looks like our county transmission data is definitely moving in the right direction. Um, but I just want to make sure that we provide the timeframe to get the logistics hammered out. So, you know, we can have a smooth transition back to in-person.
And then, I'm sorry, but I, you should, you probably knew that I didn't just have one question. And it just, it came to me while we were talking, uh and this may be more for Kathy average, but I know that uh we, no, I don't want to say scramble because it's not that bad. But every year, we kind of have to work really hard to make sure we have enough high-level math teachers to cover in the secondary, because it and it's a, it's a nationwide issue, having enough math teachers. If we have math teachers, especially at the higher levels that go on leave, and it's not just math, again, math is just simple, but some of those e- extremely specialized teachers, you know. Uh, we've got uh Chinese at River now, if those teachers opt for leave, what do we do?
So Kathy, I would say this, one, we are We are um recruiting teachers right now, we're interviewing twelve additional teachers this week. Um, obviously, we're always looking for those people with the specialty skills that will work with secondary. Right now, we have about a hundred ninety-five uh folks at the secondary level that can go six through twelve. Not all of them are specialty teachers, as you know. So when we come upon a situation like that, it's gonna take like it did with the elementary level, principals really using creative ways to look at how we cover that. So we're gonna have some one-offs, and we know that, so we're gonna have to look at how we do that. Whether that's um additional costs, and we have to have somebody in the classroom with the kids, so the teacher can do it remote. I mean, we have to look at those things, so we're being very creative and looking at how we can go about doing that. We also have teachers on special assignments. There are some folks we may be pulling into the classrooms to support the in-classroom learning wall, if I have to have a teacher who's dealing with something because of a COVID-related issue. So, um, we've had those very frank conversations with the EA. Um, we are trying to, it's a last resort thing that we pull people in off of those kinds of positions. But we had to also protect a subpool for people during the ins and outs, normal things that happen with life. And the one nice thing I see with uh our high schools coming on last, with, they have the most specialty-type classes. Um, hopefully by that time, they'll figure out the vaccines and we'll have that rolling and in place, and hopefully that doesn't become an issue for us. But um I've got a gr- great of creative uh principals who will work with us to come up with some solutions. So we'll absolutely be as creative as we have to be.
Great, I'm I'm so glad to hear it. It's been, that's been, when I read people's posts about, we've gotta go back to school and, you know, what. And I'm like, but what happens? We struggle to get math teachers or, you know, special, other specialists. What if they go on leave? So, thank you, I I figured that you guys had it figured out, but I just wanted to, again, do my due diligence, and I just wanna one more comment for me, and then I should be done. As far as the vaccine, and I know that governor is not, the governor is not listening to our particular little board meeting, but I do want to go on record. I'm not quite sure why the teachers are not way up there on the list. I know that they're slightly moved, but not really. Uh, I believe that um he should be totally following in Governor Brown's protocol for vaccinating teachers, and her reasoning was so spot-on. It's not that the um, those more at risk are um are not as important. It's that if we took our time to vaccinate all the at-risk people before we vaccinated teachers, there are millions of them, and there are only a few hundred thousand teachers. Let's get the teachers vaccinated and then get back to doing the the other work. I, many of you know that I am from Virginia, and Virginia is actually at the, near the bottom of getting their vaccinations out. But my sister, who's a teacher in Virginia, got her vaccination last week. So if a state that's near the bottom of getting vaccinations out can do it, we certainly should be able to do it in the state of Washington. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. One more question from Tracy.
I just have a a question um about special education, so um I think Daniel is on the call, I don't want to take him surprise him. So, and um I also just want to give kudos because our our special ed teachers have been doing in-person from the beginning. Um, I know a lot of teachers are starting to come back with the transition to hybrid, but, you know, our special ed teachers, I feel like have been kind of leading the way in what in-person looks like, um so I just want to give a shout out to our our special, special educators. But what what is, what is special education looking like? And I'm not, I guess I'm thinking more of our more of our kids that are in special education most of the day, are they gonna follow a hybrid schedule as well, or does it look different? Um, for more of our kiddos that are impacted, are they coming back more often than just the two days? Is it all individualized?
If it was a test, I'd say all three. Um, really, uh, if you think about it, like our learning support students will be following that same hybrid schedule that we've just discussed. But again, an IEP team makes determinations on services, on how those students are benefiting from their in-person, if they've been receiving in-person, or how they're even benefiting from their remote services. Will really determine how many days outside of hybrid they might have to come in for in-person. And that is very true for any of our self-contained programs. Um, it will always be the starting point, will be hybrid, as was described um this evening. But well, again, always the IEP team makes those determinations on what kind of services those students need and the length of days, so to speak, those services need to be delivered in.
Okay, so there's not a, there's not a, you know, these programs are coming back three days or four days or anything like that, it is all
It's all very much tracked with what you've heard this evening as far as for secondary. Except for, with the caveat, IEP teams make those determinations.
All individualized as it should be, but
Hey, thanks for including me, Tracy.
No, you're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Um, I'm gonna do a last call for questions from directors or comments.
I just have, I have two follow-up questions, um one that I forgot to ask. And that, the question I forgot was, um for students who are in uh like special ed programs, whether it's magnet program or dual language, if they choose the virtual learning academy program and they're leaving their school, do they lose their spot in their program that they're leaving, or they, can they come back to it in the fall?
Uh, we had an initial conversation around that, and um it was no. Uh, we would do everything in our power to make sure kids, because of a pandemic, because they need to make a life choice as a family, that that shouldn't harm them, so we do everything in our power to make sure, once they're already in that program, that they wouldn't lose that spot.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, when we, when we think about how we're communicating all of this to parents, I think that's a really important point to make, that people don't feel like they're giving up, they're sacrificing something that is really valuable to them and their students, um if they have to make that choice. Um, and then I just want to kind of follow up on um Kyle's questions and comments about the the students who are choosing to be full remote. Um, and I understand that that, this is very much a a a plan in progress, and we're still figuring all of that out, and I just want to um ask that once those conversations with our labor groups have happened, and we have a better idea of what full remote will look like, um, if we could just get in a a follow-up and update, whether that's through a briefing or another conversation at a meeting, um, just so that we can get a better picture of what the full remote student experience would look like. Um, and again, I think that's really important to communicate to families before they ask to make a decision.
Absolutely, we can definitely.
Thank you.
Wendy, you stole my clothes, that's what I was gonna ask is if we can uh get a follow-up just on that picture as we, I know the work is continuing to evolve, so I do want to thank everyone for the presentation tonight, um thought through a lot of details I hadn't even considered. And um I know that it's a, it's a very dynamic situation, so thank you very much. I also just, I want to reiterate, we appreciate being brought in early to the conversation, I think that this not only allows us to ask our questions, but it kind of gets things moving in the community. Um, and and um I think everyone can be on the same page and and move forward, so um, thank you for for this presentation tonight.
Yes, thank you very much.
I think you can go ahead and adjourn.
Okay, we have adjourned, thank you very much.